Roll call.
Alder, persons Madden.
Here.
Kubaki.
Here.
Schrader.
Here.
Capusta, not absent, Hamel.
Here.
Terrence.
Here.
And Wolf.
Here.
We have a quorum present.
Thank you. Statement of public notice?
This meeting was noticed in accordance with the open meeting law.
Thank you. Approval of the agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Approval of the minutes from the committee of the whole for March 22nd, 2022?
Move to approve. Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? That passes. New business. Review the final, or the draft slash final water policies, policies one, two, and three for connection to private water, private water trust connection policy, the service connection policy, and the water main relay assessment policy.
Okay. Who needs copies? You want hard copies, or you want?
I'll take one.
Yeah, I'll take one too. Print one for everybody?
Which one did you pull up? The first one, private water?
Yep. I'll take one too. It'll be at home reading as well. What I want to be when I'm at home.
Good, thank you.
I'll take one to share.
Save the tree.
There we go.
All right. Good afternoon. Can I get one for you?
See the options?
So, kind of get everyone back on memory. We're gonna start kind of with the agenda idea on. But remember, we met July of 2021. It was the first time we kind of brought this to all you guys. We met again in December of 2021 to kind of have the second discussion about this. In the meantime, in January of 2022, myself, staff, we met with actually four representatives from each of the water trust. Jeff was there too. We went over like these three policies, kind of asked them to for their input. I got a couple of your guys, you sent us inputs too. And so what we're gonna go do, kind of our goal tonight is these three policies, I kind of need them kind of finalized through this talk here because on June 14th, I'm gonna come to you guys and we want to have them finalized that you guys can say, hey, nay, or this is what we agree to, or would not agree to, so that we don't have more discussions. We're kind of setting the table here. And then after we talk about these policies, I want to kind of give you a little update of where we are going with the investigation of what is the process for taking over a private water system? Because one of the four has approached us and they are ready to start moving forward with that process. And the last two, like future schedule is June 14th to bring these three policies. And then sometime in July, we are probably gonna have another serious cow talk about letting this private water system into ours. So, if you're all ready, let's start with the private water trust connection policy. So, the only real comment I got, and it's in red, if you see it down there, is if full water main replacements are required within five or 10 years of agreement, the full cost or the cost at a sliding scale will be assessed to the residents. So, that was a comment. So, the thing is, would you guys want some type of sliding thing? You don't want some sliding thing? I'm trying to look at something maybe a little specific, five years, 10 years, what you're thinking, so that we can have this kind of written in there pretty hard, so that we can kind of move forward. That was the only comment I kind of got on this one, so.
I'll speak because I was the one who kind of said that, right? I think it makes sense to have some sort of tailing off, right? If we set it at, hey, 10 years, nine years, you know, 11 months and 13 days, they shouldn't have to pay 100% and that flips to zero, you know, two weeks later. So I think it would make sense to have some sort of number that slides. I don't know what would be appropriate for that, you know, whether it's the first five years is full and then each year after that is a, would be like a 20% tail off, understanding they've been paying into it over that time. So, I don't have strong numbers to throw out other than just some suggestions on that.
Five years minimum, the way I look at it, preferably 10 years, and then a step down after that. Because that could be extremely expensive, especially for an ill-maintained system. If you've got a system that's up and functioning, why would you want to get rid of it? You get rid of the ones that don't work.
For sure.
See, that's what I'm looking at, is that you look at a water trust that's well-run and maintained, and the city takes it over. It's a big cost on the residents that are involved with it. And it could be for other reasons than failure that the water trust could be given to the city. So if they have a escrow account with money in there, they have a good properly running system, which I know one of them does for sure, and they use the same services that the city uses to maintain their lines, and they have the same lines that the city has in, so they have the same wear that's going on. This could be pretty expensive for someone to to give this to the city and for a resident to pay. I look at it as that when the city takes it over, it's more of a revenue spot for them than it would be for anything else other than they wouldn't provide anything different than what's there. All they would do is take over the well and the lines that are there and add a meter to it and start charging more money. So, that's my dilemma with this whole thing, is that if you have a good running system and for other reasons than failure, it gets given over to the city, it's costly to the residents. To me, it's another tax and fee or tax or whatever you want to call it. It costs the people money and I'm not in favor of that on a healthy running system. I do know that you say it's voluntary to come forward and do this. And I understand that the ones that are failing will want to get rid of it, but that's still expensive for the people that gotta do it, but they weren't maintained. And the people have a right to vote and be a part of that water main association or whatever they call it. So, in a failing one, they're part of the failing system. But in a non-failing one, I have dilemmas.
Well, if it's non-failing, there wouldn't be any cost.
Well, they wouldn't turn it over, but there could be a reason. Maybe nobody wants to run it anymore or something. There could be reasons.
So.
I can tell you right now, when we met with them, Jeff was there. Three of these, they have no intention of turning this over. I'm telling you right now, they came to the meeting, they thanked us, see you later. We'll call you if we want, but they have zero intention.
Right, right.
Of turning it over. They don't want to, they don't want to. The one, I think, is why they were doing it is they just want to marry a better quality of water. They're the only ones that approach us. The other, no one has, the other three groups have not. So, again, like I said, this is totally volunteer. Like, there is, the other three, I don't think that they'll approach us for a very long time or have any intention of turning the system over.
Is that the one on Cornell? Or the?
Yes, Cornell would be the one that is, the one that has reached out to us.
Right, right. And I understand the city wants to protect yourself from taking over a bad system. But this also doesn't protect taking over a good system. It's gonna cost the people money to take over a good system, and that's the dilemma I have.
Why would it cost them money to take over a good system?
Because they would have to come through and hook it up. And they're basing it based on putting new lines in and things that they may not need to put in. And that's part of the discussion we had at one time, is that the city is afraid of how old this is and that.
Do you mean laterals going to the homes?
But when I talk to people, they use the same people, the same services the city uses for the lines. I mean, that's part of the dilemma.
Alderman and Wolf, I'm just gonna ask, because there's something I'm not following. How will, how will it cost them, if you have a good system with all good lines and good pipes and all that, and they come to us because, say their management's gone and they need somebody to manage, they want to turn over their system, how is that gonna cost them?
The cost of putting a line into the house, like you said, a lateral.
But they have that, that's all set up already.
They should have a lateral. Everyone should have water. It's just that they're using their own well. They're not using our system.
I know I missed the last meeting, so I apologize for that, but I know the one before that, there was talk that things would have to be replaced. And that would be a lot of money. I mean, we had.
But if it has to be replaced, it would only be if they don't have a good running system. If they have a good running system, then nothing has to be replaced and there's no cost.
If their system is running, I don't think any of us want to replace anything because we're gonna dig up roads or anything like that. It's more of like, for example, let's say they have a hydrant, we check a hydrant, and that hydrant is not operating. We would want to replace that hydrant so that the fire department can use that hydrant.
Right, right.
We check our system, that's why you see all the flushing of the hydrants. We check it on a very regular basis, yearly. They do not. We don't know for sure. We also want to check valve boxes so we can turn the water.
I can tell you that in my water trust, they do do all that.
Yeah, and that's why, you know what?
And actually, they have an engineer running it, and you know, and that's the scary part, is if somebody leaves and nobody wants to take that over and do it properly, it can cost people a lot of money.
But if the system's running fine, I don't understand the problem.
I don't either. Yeah. If they don't change, there's no money in changing. You're right. But if they do change, there's money involved, and that's the part of it.
If they voluntarily change, they're changing for their own particular reason. And the only thing we're doing is taking the water source instead of the wellhead that's coming from the city. That's the only difference. It should be the only difference if the system is functioning properly.
Yeah, the difference is they'll just put a meter on it, the city will start charging for the money.
Right, because we sell water.
That's all that would happen. You're right.
Instead of paying your water trust, you would pay the city.
Right, which would be an awful thing, but yeah. If you're in a, if you're in a well situation as an association, it's a terrible, it's a terrible upgrade.
And that's why it's voluntary.
Well, yeah, it's a revenue. That's how I look at it. And that's my point. That's my point. I understand all that.
I have a question. What is the expected life expectancy of a water main that you guys install somewhere?
If it's a brand-new one, pretty long. Like, I mean, I don't know what's in the ground.
30 years, 20 years, 40 years?
50, 60? Yeah.
Okay.
The new ones, yeah. They can last a very long time.
My sliding scale's a little extreme. I was thinking if you figure what would be a normal replacement and sort of sliding scale fit, but I don't know if one one-hundredth would be necessarily a fair number.
The hundred-year one is on today's materials. There's stuff in the ground that could be failing now that's 30 years old.
I think why one of the things that's happening with Cornell is they're beginning to have bigger and bigger breaks, water main breaks. We get water main breaks, you get water main breaks, everyone gets water main breaks. As the system ages, which is a system that's probably been in the ground a little bit longer, the materials might be not as new, these breaks are happening more and more. If you don't have money kind of built up, those breaks can start getting more expensive.
I think that's where Cornell.
And that's where I think Cornell is at. They're, and they got a little water quality issue as well, where they need to probably upgrade some of their wells. So, they're looking at, you know what, this is not functioning for us. We're ready to kind of start this process.
Correct me if I'm wrong, the lateral from the street to the house is the homeowner's responsibility, is it not?
From the right away.
From the right away, okay. So if there's something wrong with the lateral, no matter who it is.
From the right away to theirs, that's their responsibility. Yeah.
So, where are we at on just one-third of this policy we're talking about? This is just water trust coming in?
Just the water trust policy. And guys, like, why kind of we're bringing this forward is because.
We have somebody.
We have someone at the door, and we have nothing in place. There's nothing at the city. We have nothing.
Putting this off is not an option.
Correct.
I'm gonna suggest a five-year, 100% replacement with a 10% step down per year for the next 10 years.
I like it. Sounds scientific.
What'd you think?
On the first five years, it would be 100%.
Yes.
And then through year six through 15, it's reduced by 10%.
Correct.
Then it would be 90.
So year six would be 90%, year seven, 80%.
Year 16 would be zero, correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
So.
That gives it enough time, I think, to.
So when you say five years, 100%, what does that exactly mean?
So if the system fails within the first five years, the people that, the old water trust is responsible for the replacement costs at 100%. If it happens, if the system fails in year six, it would be 90%. Year seven, and keep on going down.
And the city would pick up the other 10?
Yeah. The utility would.
We really want to do that for 15 years? I mean, we have houses that are, that are run already by the city that don't have something that long for replacement.
And this says for a full water main replacement, so what is the difference between repairing one and fully replacing one?
We don't, we don't know what the break is. Let's say, like, let's say if it's a little break and maybe you have to dig it up the ground, you have to only replace a small section of pipe. What if that break is a lot longer? You might have to dig up and replace the whole water main line.
Do we need to, like a legal question, do we need to make sure we detail what that is? Where somebody's gonna say, well, you didn't replace the whole thing, you only replaced 80% of it, and so I'm not.
It makes all the fights in the subdivision, or none at all? It's a repair unless you completely replace everything in the subdivision.
Okay. But now, now here's the dilemma with this percentage, is that these places were put in in good faith by what the city told them to do to run these lines. Some of these places were, I believe, the Fountainwood one was actually told that they couldn't hook up to the city, they had to put a well in theirself. So now we're in a whole nother dilemma. Because here, we want to charge someone that wanted originally, when they built the subdivision, to put city water in, they couldn't do it. And they're gonna be charged for it if they do do it. And they did, like I said, good faith in going by what the city guidelines told them to put in. And here, we want to charge these people because they did what the city wanted. Again, I have a dilemma with this.
Only in the case of a complete system failure.
Well, I understand, but it's still a dilemma then.
So what's, where's the dilemma, I guess?
The dilemma is that the sliding scale. I mean, I don't, I don't understand all this 10 years, 100%. If the city buys it over, why should someone have to pay 100% for five years and then 10% for 15 years?
The sliding scale was a give.
If there's a cost, there's a cost. So you're, you're saying.
The city told them to put it in the way they put it in. So, is there really a cost, or should it be shared by all the people? Because they did what the city wanted the city to do.
Well, isn't it kind of like the same analogy? Let's say you have, we have homes that have a well. The well, they put it on, all of a sudden their well fails, they're gonna pay to get the guts of our city water. So now you're thinking of a big well.
That's a private well. This will be a city-run function the day you take it over.
Yeah.
Talking before.
But when the person's on a well and then it goes to ours, then it becomes part of the city as well.
But they're not operating the well anymore.
No, but they wouldn't be operating the well.
You wouldn't be operating the well in the trust either anymore.
Well, you'd be using, the city, you'd be using the same well on the water.
We're gonna probably abandon them.
You would abandon the Fountainwood well? I would think you would hook up to that well. It's all well-maintained and everything's done to it.
It all depends on certain systems.
I can't believe that you would abandon that well.
But that well, again, when we start looking at wells, for example, when we talked about number two, the DNR already said, if you take over that one at Cornell Circle, here's the long list that you need to do to get that well up to standards, which means.
Was it being maintained? That's the question.
But again, a well for a small little neighborhood is not the same well that we're using for the city.
And actually, the question's, your point is, and I believe it's in the policy, we're gonna value a system when we take it over. So if the well is usable and an asset to our city, it's beneficial for us and you, and the existing trust for us to take it over, brings their value.
I understand that, but I think we're going in circles. The big dilemma I have is that they put this in under city guidelines. And then we want to charge them for it by telling them we're gonna take it over as a city. And I have a dilemma with that.
They were never, they were never forced.
I understand that, but it was done with good faith and it was done the way the city told them to build it. So we're having a dilemma here.
The municipal water system didn't exist until 1980. These systems were operated in 70s.
Right, so it was put in on their own choice.
Per city code.
No, no, because the rest of the subdivision has Fountainwood. There's only a small, you know this, there's only a small part of Fountainwood that has, that's part of that trust. The rest of them all have private wells. So it's just that group of people that chose to form a trust because they wanted something closer to municipal water. They weren't forced to do that.
They did want to put in city water.
There was no city water.
Then I must be hearing everything wrong then from people who were involved with building it and involved, from the start, the same people that are running it now.
There was no municipal water in the subject. Municipal system started in 1988.
But it was done still, if we go by the guidelines of what the city told them to do to put the lines in. So they did what the city wanted to do.
I don't know what the city was.
That's my dilemma.
I wasn't here.
Yeah, but it's not my job to be here either. My job is to represent the people, what happened and why it was put in. And it's your job to understand the system and take care of it.
It's a private system.
I think even if.
No, this part is, if it goes public. I'm just, I'm just telling you my dilemma's here, is this was done by, by the city wanted to be done. And then if you come in and you do, my problem is the charges you want to do.
So the charges, like I, I'll go back to what I was talking earlier. There's a cost to something. So either the people coming, that are asking to join our system are bringing a cost with them that most people would argue should be borne on them. If you don't charge them, you're charging the other people that you represent that aren't in that system, and they have to pay for somebody coming in that they didn't ask them to come in. So it's a private trust asking, it's a private trust asking to come in.
It's kind of like a road though. The road is everybody's. And when you built that and you put the pipes in, it was everybody's too. Because that's the only reason it was allowed to be built there, is they had to have access to water.
I can't go up and pull water over. It's not like a road. I can drive on any road.
I know, but the city allowed them to build there and do that. That's my point.
Yeah, but the city didn't build it and the city didn't maintain it. So the liability over the long term, if it's breaking down, it's not the city's. The city gave them the, this is what you need to put in, this is the code. They didn't lay the pipe, they didn't maintain it, right? So over the last 20 years, whatever's happened to it is really not the city's issue.
If Fountainwood completely fails, who's gonna pay for that now?
The trust, the people.
Yeah, so they're bearing a cost now if it fails, whereas if they voluntarily give it to the city.
But once you give it to the city and it fails, it's the city's, right?
Well, after a certain, that's what this whole discussion is about.
My point is, what are we doing here on this part?
So that's what this whole discussion about, on this sliding scale, the proposal from Alderman Kubaki is the first five years it fails, the people that bring, come in from the trust have to.
Pay 100%.
Pay 100% of it.
If it fails.
And then it scales down from there, which, maybe your argument could be it shouldn't go from 10 years after that, maybe five years at 20%, but that's wherever you guys want to come in on that.
And that's my dilemma is 5, 100%.
And this isn't just a.
And then up to 15 years. I think 15 years is a long time. That's my opinion.
Well, that was why I asked how long the pipe lasts. I mean, we're not gonna scale it out to 100 years, but if they're telling me our pipes now are gonna last 30 to 50 years, we could essentially write 1/30th each year over the next 30 years, assuming that that's what the assumed cost would be.
The assumed likelihood is on new pipes. The pipes that we're gonna be taking over could be failing at any time because it's, they're corroded, they're different materials.
I'm just saying the expected, what we're charging people and sort of that expected replacement, but yeah, I don't.
So, so it's like buying a car. You can't take it back and have somebody pay 100% of the repairs. I don't see how that is fair. I mean, you're already paying taxes and everything in the city.
Alderman Schrader?
I was just gonna say, right now, they're paying 100% anyway if something happens to it in the trust. They're paying 100%.
Well, it's divided up.
So this is actually a better deal. In my opinion, it's a better deal for them to do this.
Do we have something written in if there is a trust that has $300,000?
The money has to be refunded back, right? The city don't take, the city can't take the money.
That's, that's. But they could use that money to.
Well, it gets refunded per person. If there's 1,000, 100 people, then you.
That homeowner's option to use that to put their cost of what it is.
Okay, so I'm just debating the time here. That's my point.
Okay, so your time, so your concern is more going 10 years or 15 versus 10 years?
15 years seems like a long time. If we're gonna take, it's like buying a car. You don't get 15 years and get money back from the dealer because you got a flat tire.
If these pipes have a 30 to 50-year life.
What does? I'm sorry.
If these pipes have a 30 to 50-year life, and Scott mentioned there about 15 years in right now, it's about, you know, that's on the shorter end of the half-life. I'm gonna make a motion that we have 100% payback for the first five years and a 10% reduction each year thereafter until the 15th year. I make that motion.
Well, you know, and then you have other people, can I ask you this? You have other people moving in and out of the area.
We have a motion and a second. Now we can, discussion on the motion and second. Does anyone want to start, talk more?
I like it.
And then you have people moving in and out, so you're gonna transfer that cost onto new ownerships too as well? Is that your suggestion?
Yes.
Just like taxes.
Further discussion on that motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
So.
So that was the amendment.
Five to one? Any, any other changes that anyone wants to see in this agreement? Question, just for clarification purposes, so water trust comes in, asks to come in, we assess their value. What about their per-house cost that you typically have on a new house? Do we, how's that work?
We're, that's the details when that person comes in, where that July 22nd meeting is where we're gonna really get into the nuts and bolts of all this stuff, of really the cost. Because that's when we're gonna start figuring out the assessment and the WCA charges and seeing what they have. If they have something like a good well that's an asset, well, that should be a credit to that trust, you know? If you don't, you know, then we start playing the game of what's evaluation of back and forth. Each one, each of these trusts are going to be different. It's just a fact of life.
So, so for explanation for those watching at home and those here, when a home, new home is built or someone hooks up into our system, they pay a WCA charge, which is $3,500 or?
Was it $2,500?
$2,500, and that's your, it's your capital contribution for the system of, like, building the system and maintaining it. Your water rates, while, you know, that goes towards that too, but it's really kind of your buy-in cost. So what we're talking is when we take over a water trust, if, say, they're for simplicity's sake, there's 10 homes in the system, instead of collecting $25,000, we're gonna value that system and it may, they may have enough value in that system that where it's gonna offset that $25,000 and they pay less, or they're gonna, or there's not gonna be any value and they're gonna pay the full amount. And if there's a cost to hook up in between, we're gonna have to figure that out also. So if like they're three miles away and we gotta run a lateral.
Or they have funds built up.
Yeah.
I mean, those funds in HOA, some of them might be pretty strong in your, in your, like, water trust. That brings that to the table as well.
So if somebody has a good well, that's something, and it's usable, that's something that we would pay that trust for.
Well, we give them a credit.
Or just good pipes.
Yeah.
You know, the mains are probably our biggest worry.
A good system may actually cost very little to take over versus one that's failing.
So, so if we build, you use, build a new house and they pay $2,500 to hook up, and something happens in five years, they don't have to pay anything. And for, something happens in 14 years, they don't have to pay anything. They paid their $2,500 upfront.
And they pay their rate, their.
But they're using a system that could be 50% old, and they're not doing the same thing.
But when they build a new house, we kind of know that with the new pipes and the standards that.
Well, they could be building a new house pulling off of old pipes.
Yeah, but I mean, like anything, they're paying their monthly bill, which is going toward.
Well, that's, these people will be paying their monthly bill too.
The cost of the lot pays for those pipes.
Yeah.
What's that?
The cost of the lot is what pays for those pipes. The developer doesn't just say, I'm gonna get, you know.
That's why a lot costs $150,000. It's to pay for.
Infrastructure.
Infrastructure, the road, the sewer.
Pipes, the sewer, all of that.
Yeah.
So they're paying, on top of that, they have to pay out of pocket the WCA and then their rec charges for sewer and all that. So that's on top of that. All right.
Okay.
Any other questions on this? So, that takes care of the private water trust. Would this be a good breaking point to come back? So we have, we have council, and actually, we have Big Lake to get through. You can go to council and come back and finish this up after council. There's not much on council that's gonna take that long. So I would look for a motion to adjourn until after the common council meeting.
Don't move. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned at 6:15. I'd like to reconvene the committee of the whole at 6:29 PM. Continuing with new business, private, I'm sorry, service connection policy.
All right, so this is probably, I would have to say probably your biggest kind of like decision what it is. So right now, just scenario water main extension. Our existing policy is connection required once private well fails with no option to drill new well. Scenario two, existing water main is available, but resident is currently not connected. Existing policy is connection required once private well fails with no option to drill new well. The only comments we got was from Alderman Kubaki was connection required at a point of sale, The only comments we got was from Alderman Kabaki was connection required at a point of sale, connection required at a point of sale. So the big discussion is, do you want to keep it the same? Or do you want another option for when either water main is extended or if water main is available in front of your house? Do we want to have a policy saying at a point of sale? Or in so many years that that person, no matter what, even if their well's, is okay, that you want to hook up? And I believe we provided you a Excel spreadsheet that really, the only one really in this area would be Brookfield, if I remember right, that really has that policy of like, it's called a forced hookup, just to let everyone know.
And what, and just for those watching at home, what is their policy? You said, what kind of forced hookups do they have?
They have a forced hookup and then I believe it's ten years, is that right? Yeah, ten years then to, um, to actually then get your lateral and hook up, so. Once it's available. So for example, I live in city of Brookfield and I will give you me as personal, I do not have water main in front of my house. It's on a dead end, I will be fully assessed for this new water main that's gonna go in, and then I will get a letter that says I have ten years to hook up.
I had a building in New Berlin, uh, which they laid water on and, um, I've yet to hook up to it.
Yeah.
And I sold the building and they didn't have to hook up to it.
So.
And then there's one in Franklin where they're adding a new water tower because they need new capacity, and because of the running main past the church, and they're forcing the church to connect now because the water main's there, and it's the only reason the water main is there is for the city's own benefit of the water tower. So. It's all over the board.
It is, it's, it is all over the board, so.
So I'll restate my suggestion, my suggestion is leave the policy the same, if the well fails, you gotta hook up, um, but you, upon sale, it's required to hook up.
Okay. And it, would that be for, both for water main extension and for existing water?
Yes.
Here's a question I have, I know that some areas, when you do this, once you use the well for outdoor water, would we want to do something like that?
You can do that, that's, that's governed by the DNR.
That's, that's fine, they can, they can still use the water, the wells, we don't need to write that in anything, that's all.
No, no, it does, it's done now.
Is it, okay.
Further discussion on this?
Does the point of sale cover a, like, transfer, like, say, somebody passes away and family takes the home?
That's a Jeff question, what about putting it to a trust or anything like that, would that?
You could do what you want, you could have it be where when the property transfers.
I'd say an arms-length sale.
I was just gonna say.
I was gonna recommend that.
Better way to go is, uh, actual sale. And that can even be a foreclosure sale, but I wouldn't do it if property just transfers, I, it's kind of like, not, I mean, why are you doing that to a person?
Yeah.
So if I put my house in a trust, it's not gonna trigger it.
Right.
Do you, it's kind of like done at the point of sale and how many years after the point of sale? Kind of like done, or do you want to do like right away?
I think it's probably best at point of sale.
What?
It's probably best at point of sale, but that's up for you guys to decide, so.
Point of sale.
Yeah, they can grab the loan with the house.
You wait till your house gets sold again.
Again? Again?
It's just, it's messy, yeah.
It'd just be, point of sale is the easiest way to go.
Any further discussion on this part? All right, last one.
I'm just, hold on, I'm just making my notes, I don't forget.
Same thing.
All right, so I'm going to basically say, no one kind of applied or said anything about this one, and we kind of talked about political suicide on this one to do this. So, um, pretty much you have your three options there. The one that we have found in every committee, uh, community is do not assess residents, utility to cover all costs. And what that means is water main relay assessment policy, let's say, there's public water main in front of your house and it has to be relayed because it, it broke, well, we collect your WCA charges and we do all that stuff. Not one community then would reassess that, um, resident to pay for the relay, it is just covered by the city through our water utility.
And we, we kind of do that with, with our road program too, right?
Well, our road program, we don't do any front foot assessments.
So I mean, there's no assessments, so.
Correct.
It, it kind of goes hand in hand, I would, I would kind of think, but I could be wrong.
I, I think you're all saying option three, do not assess residents and.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. I figured that one would be pretty easy.
Except in Rob's district.
It makes sense, but I, you know, share revenue, right, I mean, that's what we've been doing, is share, shared revenue on it, right?
No, this would be all our city's cost and this would be the way to go, so. Um, just getting back to the schedule quickly, B, city Meskigo started the investigation, what is, so we're looking at talking to people right now, Wisconsin DNR and the PSC. So the one subdivision, Cornell, um, has reached out to us, DNR has already said, they were nice enough and said, okay, if you take it over, here's all the things that you need to do to get that well up to grade. Um, the PSC started giving us the process, it says, they said about three to four months, pretty much, to take over, getting through the PSC process for it. So again, we, we started investigating because we got to know the process, because we, we've never done one of these. So, um, those are the two, um, government agencies, the DNR and the PSC, that we have to work through in order to do this. So leading on to the next schedule, next Tuesday, June fourteenth, we'll bring these three policies, as you said, I will get them to you at least a week ahead of time, so that if there's any changes, you can let me know. And then in July, we're gonna have another call, probably to talk about the real details of that community, because after this gets passed on June fourteenth, that gentleman is waiting, and he is very, very interested to go.
Go.
So.
The communication with the DNR, was the, the things they stated specific to this well or just the, here's the generic?
No, 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 it was very specific to this well.
Okay, so they know like this well has this problem, this, oh, okay, got it.
Oh, yeah, I mean, that's.
Okay.
Correct, they have the whole history, so. Any other discussions on this part?
All right, last item, um, discussion of an offer to purchase a part of tax key number MSKC twenty-one ninety-eight one fifty-seven from Jason Stark.
So. I'm gonna give you a little history of this, um, you, you have a, a two-page memo, um, Adam gave a, a nice detail, but I, I just want to give you some history and kind of say what he said. So somewhere between twenty seventeen and twenty twenty, Mr. Stark cleared a portion of the city property adjacent to his lot. And in various stages built a gravel walkway, patio feature, fire pit, installed lighting, stored miscellaneous items, firewood, chairs, et cetera, and extended a gravel walkway further into an adjacent wetland on the city property. All this work was done without any city or DNR permits or approvals. Once the city became aware of this encroachments in the city outlot, we sent a letter to Mr. Stark alerting him of the viola, violations that were present. Mr. Stark let to say no, he would address the violations that were present and restore the outlot, upland area and the wetlands back to the original condition by the agreed-upon date of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. Since that time, the city received the offer in question, so that's where we're at. And this is to buy the upland area of the wetlands.
It's, it's the what?
To buy the up, upland area of the wetlands.
So there's, essentially there's a pond behind his house that was filled in, that's.
Yes.
Way of saying it, so he filled it in and added.
You can see that in the pictures, yeah.
So we sent him a letter explaining his violation, well, actually, I went out there first and talked to him, and he's like, yep, I did this.
Well, you can see the road.
Yeah, you can see it from the road, but I actually went out and talked to him because kind of wanted to see what his thought process was on this, and he admits it, he did it. Um, in his view, he bettered the area, um, because it's a conservation area, so it's all left natural and there's swamp and everything else. Um, so we sent them a, essentially a compliance letter, telling him to undo everything you've done. And first come up with a plan, you have a certain date to get this plan, after that, you have, um, a certain amount of time to fix it, if you need more time, let us know and we'll give you more time. So we're in that. He sent us back acknowledging he got the letter, said he would have it cleaned out by, I forgot what it was.
June thirtieth.
June thirtieth.
Yep.
Um, last, about two weeks ago, we got an offer to purchase, sent to us to offer, he would like to buy that part of land versus having to take care of his problem there. Um, the offer had to be accepted, I think, the day we got it.
Has been?
No.
No, it had to be.
Had to be, um, so I, I sent him an email back, said, well, I need common council to weigh in on this, our next meeting is here, so you have to at least give us till, well, tomorrow. Um, so if there's interest in this at all, there's a whole long litany of stuff that has to be done to even do this. Um, but if there's no interest in it, I'd rather just get back to him and tell him there's no interest and then be done instead of going through all those steps.
Well, have any of the neighbors expressed an interest in the property as well?
To buying it?
Mm-hmm.
No.
Or using it?
They couldn't get to it, it's all, it's, well, it's landlocked because he created land from his property to it, so, but there's no other access besides that.
No, there isn't, okay, because on, on this, it seems like there's a, a borderline area that.
I, I'm thinking there's a reason why that property was not involved with other property.
Oh, it's retention for one, partially.
And number two, it probably has to do with green space, when they built the division, um, I, I don't have an interest in, in selling the property, I think it should be left the way it was.
Anyone have any interest in this?
Yeah, I'd say sell it, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Well, I was just gonna say, being a realtor, I'm wondering where he came up with that price because that's very low. To me.
I, I wouldn't disagree, and there's probably, I'll, I'll say, if there is interest in this, the cost that he's, the cost to go through all the rigmarole to do this is gonna be more than that.
Yeah, I mean, just the surveying and all the things that have to be.
Which we would, I mean, we, I would recommend if we, if there is interest in this, and I'm not recommending if, well, this is up to you guys, what you want to do in this, but we would have to change the counter, we would have to counteroffer, yeah, with a long litany of things.
I, I can see.
But it is a precedence that you guys would be setting.
Yeah, and I'm concerned that it now tells other people, just build on city land and they'll sell it to you.
Yeah, I, that's just, to me, it's like, yeah, you're doing something wrong and then you.
And you get rewarded for it.
And then you say, oh, I'll just buy it.
Yeah, we'll get, we'll reward you for.
And then the next person does it and we don't, and then they want to sue us because we sold it to one guy and not the other.
How old is this development here, do we know?
This is the house that does the really cool, um, display for the, um, uh, Christmas display up behind.
Yeah, but I'm saying the, the development, how old, is it ten years, twenty years?
Nah, maybe ten years.
Ten years, so there, there's probably some kind of, I, I'm probably on to something with why that land was left there like that.
Well, again.
It's percentages of building and things like that.
We do conservation areas and we do wetlands, we do it for like a lot of subdivisions.
A reason. You do it for a reason.
So.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, I can.
Conferences, no interest? All right, I will send, I will reject the offer and send it back to him. Thank you. Any communications in miscellaneous business? If not, a motion to, a final motion to adjourn for this evening would be in order.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we're adjourned at six forty-three.